I want to introduce the Professor Lee Hee Won from Korea. I guess he will give a talk about, you know, ARN Research Network. So please, we are going to share the video from his side.
Hi, how are you? My name is Nam Jin Cho. I'm glad to introduce Professor Hee Won Lee. This is one of the preliminary lecture for Asia Korea Conference on Science and Technology. The title of the whole conference is Human Health and Longevity in the Post-COVID-19 Era. And this is the first event in Singapore and almost globally. We're doing the hybrid conference. On and offline, right now, we have more than 200 people standing through the Zoom and onsite, and there we have a limited seat for the 50 only, but it's packed right now. So I'm very glad to introduce Professor Hee Won Lee. Let me briefly introduce his pioneer work, and that is related to today's talk about Brain Mobility and Asia Research Network. He is currently the emeritus professor in Chemistry Department, Hanyang University in Seoul. And the most important work is very early year with Li Can. He actually found, and then he see the importance of this research network, which is right now we're connecting with Zoom and other thing for the on-contact. But he identified very early year for global cooperation, Core Asia Research Network for Global Partnership, Asia SMT Innovation Forum, Calam mobility, East Asia Cooperation in Nanotechnology, and so on. That was 2007. And after that, quickly, he found this forum, Science Forum, Science, Technology, Innovation Forum 2014, and then approved as this government activity, so-called is Asia Research Network. So I want to invite you all, because this is Asia Korea Conference on Science and Technology. It's basically the founding, the father of this whole network theory. So please welcome Professor Hee Won Lee. Welcome, Hee Won Lee.
Thank you very much, Professor Nam Jin Cho. It is really my great honor to be participate in your very great webinar, especially also congratulate your great leadership for opening AKC 2020. Part of that, the track one, I would like to give you a kind of insight of Asian Research Network and the importance of brain mobility in Asia, not only between Korea and Asian country, but also between Korea and many other countries in the world. Let me start my presentation.
Yeah.
Alright, as Professor Nam Jin Cho mentioned, I am currently emeritus professor at Hanyang University after retirement, that's a year ago, in Hanyang. And also, I have kind of another dual position as a specially appointed professor at Tokens of Technology. Yes, let me begin my talk in track number one. Okay, today, especially my slide content are following. First thing is, because of Asian people, especially ASEAN people among audience, ASEAN brief and connectivity, I will briefly talk about. Next, innovation for shaping the bright future, and maybe also about Korea, Industrial Revolution and some innovations. Now, what we are doing in these days. And the main topic is Asian Research Network, that features SMT innovation and hopefully looking forward to having some global partnership with many different institutions and some recommendation. And these days, because of this COVID-19 pandemic situation, even AKC, we cannot invite people, you know, offline, so many of audience are now online. So this COVID-19 already caused countries around to close kind of border, so we cannot go in and out. So I wish, maybe soon, sometimes next year, COVID-19 is going to be away, and then hopefully our researcher, including myself, or to Singapore, you come to Korea or other country like this. So considerable influence by COVID-19 in becoming extremely, extremely critical these days. Hopefully, safe and health working condition from hosting institution may provide more safe, you know, platform for inviting people. Okay, about ASEAN community, as you know very well. So ASEAN, 10 countries, you know, this is also kind of, not only each country, it is kind of community. So people, including people now in Singapore, you may just, you know, go around in among these Asian communities. Because ASEAN community now is highly connected, not only physically, among the people. So we have kind of free trade agreement these days. So in case of ASEAN Community Vision 2025, not only we said people's mobility, like a regular trade silence and stimulus logistics, Easter innovation, sustainable infrastructure, those are quite important for many people, not only people in ASEAN country, like tourists from other country. Those Community Vision 2025, it is one big aim for ASEAN countries. So in case of a good is ASEAN Summit in Manila, they have six thematic priorities. You can look this one. So anyway, for innovation, it is important, and also mobility, especially like you, very talented person in science and technology, for developing your country, for contributing yourself, for, you know, your country, and for global, for goodwill, that's very, very important. Let me just take one example from Prof. Saizawa, who was the president of Tokens of Technology. I invited him in 2017 in ASEAN STI Forum. So his slide indicate also Japanese government, especially like Ministry of Education, Spore, we call MEXT, they are also doing great work for collaboration between university and also other institution, not only from Japan, but also if a global concept. So we are now saying, we are sometimes talking about local, but also we are talking about the global. So global-local in connectivity viewpoint, it is very, very important issue for all people, including me. For that, once we do have it, maybe by contribution for Asian people, for the world, we can reshape the country and the world with as a bright, as a nice country with a bright future. So member country depending on the policy, sometimes they are saying Society 1.0 or Society 5.0 based on the Japanese government. So we are already in high connectivity society. So hopefully, after 2020, so not only based on the science, but the global view, those are well interconnected to make a better world. So I hope people, you and me and the audience and scientists in Singapore and Korean community in Singapore and the world, they may contribute each other, not only looking for their own interest, but for the good people, for the all. So for that, sometime innovation is quite important and necessary. Innovation, not only destructive innovation, but continued. So sustainable innovation should be combined. So then, we are, you know, living in a society, so that means of the continuous development, sustainability with a certain growth. But we might, you know, consider how we can have a more breakthrough innovation in the future. The UN also have another knowledge platform, we call OK, not OK, that the OK, which means open a knowledge platform. So we are scientists, we are in scientific community, and we are looking for collaboration as a partner. And then we need a collaborative funding from, you know, different funding resources. And hopefully, we may open our knowledge for the goodwill. So that means open knowledge platform is another, you know, platform for the future. So we are more, we have a more response to global challenges for sustainable socioeconomic development. Let me just give you one slide about 17 UN SDGs. We have 17 such them global goals. So each country, including Asia Research Network in Korea and ASEAN country, not only ASEAN, European or Americans, whoever, they are working. They are trying to do something to contribute for the UN, especially under the framework of the 17 SDGs in different, you know, agenda. So we are, from few years ago, we talked about the Fourth Industrial Revolution, but many country have their scheme of the STD, SDGs linked to Fourth Industrial Revolution. Let me just give you a few example of Fourth Industrial Revolution. Definition, I'm not going to say in detail, already from double's forum 2016, there is an official agenda and announcement related to Fourth Industrial Revolution. These are related to First Industrial Revolution definition. Not only physical world, cyber world, but now deploy world humanity, including all together, becoming more important. That's why now this is next, and not only AI, but healthcare is becoming more and more important. So impact before and after, maybe you can look this way. So in case of product manufacturing, normally like small-scale matter products, they create demand, but this, but now a demand create a new product and speed, a flexibility matter, going more critical. And mostly will be leading by many other innovative startup and SME. Now, let me talk more about innovation, not only about the world and then the Korea. SAMA, the Bloomberg, every year, they announce the ranking of the most innovative country. Korea 2018, 17, 16, 15. From my knowledge, Korea SAMA was selected as the most innovative country, needs to have many parameters. The Singapore also are number 6 in 2017, the very famous Singapore, London. Korea also this in architect viewpoint, another brand marketing, Seoul. Alright, so as I said, just in the previous slide, there are many parameters. In case 2018 Innovation Index by Bloomberg, Korea gained number 1, but there are many, you know, parameters. So these are the how they evaluate. Now, let me say in different way innovation. Everybody know Wright Brothers, who invented the airplane. I was able to visit Dayton, Ohio, where Wright Brothers, he tested like first, you know, first phase of this wooden-based airplane. So he has the inspiration. So inspiration, innovation, it is. From your side, from also from my view, is quite essential for something to realize. So research, we have to do experiment whether failure was success. And another new idea, something should be implemented. And continuous thinking, continuous innovation, sometime disruption innovation can change from their idea, like not only from like here, by foot, it's like keep, you know, pushing to rotate this chain idea from bicycle, then after then 2019 or 2021. But later on, you have a bomb off, like we have another airplane. The finally, we have like a speed shuttle. So ideal with inspiration becoming, you know, real product. We need a lot of, and we have long experience, long period of time. Okay, let me talk about the Korea. The many of you, audience and also speaker, already had experience for coming to Korea, spend many years, and return to your country, and devote yourself for your country. Sometime still have a good relations with Korea, not only Korea, but other country too. I was educated in the US, after coming back in 1988, about 32 years ago. Then I, you know, did something for Korea, for my country. And also I opened my eyes, because I was educated a little bit more globally in, you know, in the US from since 201981. So I just open up globalism, and I try to do something during last year, hopefully. You know, I don't know how long I can do, but at least 30 years, more than that. Okay, I'm coming back to Korea, innovation. Because you came to Korea, you know Korea, what Korea is, now current status, maybe past, maybe future, you know very well. But let me, innovation, innovation, I said, continues or disruptive. Korea in terms of manufacturing, so there are the leading manufacturing, now is four. Leading manufacturing country, first, it was Germany, second, Japan, third, Korea, now China. So those are the countries who has very strength, good strengths about manufacturing. Korea, China, and Germany, they have their own plan. But what about Korea? Like later, sometime manufacturing innovation 4.0, from Korean view, or Germany view. So look, the Korea's economic growth thermal since 1970 is a key driving force. And Korea 2015, according to this figure, Korea manufacturing GDP almost 30. Now, we are 2020, what about in the future? Is it still going on? Well, smart factory, smart industry, let's look. 2000, after 2000, present time, as I showed in the previous slide, here, 30%. But now, maybe by converting ICT, smart industry, mixed thing, and also the coveries area becoming more wide. So we are entering from information era to smart era. So I believe you recognize this kind of changing society. Even COVID-19, we are becoming a citizen, we should live in like a new normal, yes. Which means, even one case, COVID-19 changed the world, never experienced before. But we are scientist, researcher, and we are one of citizens for contributing yourself for the country. What I can do as one citizen for country and for someone else, even for yourself, for your family. So we have to open our eyes, how the new era is will be in the future. So this slide took from previous speaker, Professor Timo DiWright at NTU, and I invite him 2017 in ASEAN STI Forum. Here, like government, academia, industry kind of convergence or interdisciplinary in order to have a new strategy. So they are suggesting this scheme as triple helix puzzle. I like this slide very much. So I hope some of audience or speaker who are representing your country, maybe you may think about what you can do as a scientist who educate very well for your country by looking this on the first slide. I also like mobility, connectivity. Connectivity means is already linked. You are already linked on this webinar. I was kind of luckily linked in the US when I went to US in 1981. I was also well linked to China, Japan, India, Singapore, Indonesia, Vietnam, Europe, many other countries. They last longer than 30 years, connectivity. Are you one of these, just connect the line? Are you as a gate position? Without you, this one cannot pass through. Are you on the line? Are you at the gate? Or some country as a platform, you know, the whole, depending on concept of looking at. Sometime we are on the line, sometime you are communicate by the gate. Okay, let's think about for your future. So great connectivity, simple connective society or hyper-connective society. So we still need certain global changes. I hope this presentation may give you certain overview and idea, how we can be more well-connected in coming new normal era. Now COVID-19 kind of big burden to be isolated. But this one also suggest another way, how we can do overcoming these difficulties. In this case, communities and government, policymakers, and normal people, or scientist, they all, we have a certain rules, how we can do it? Let's think about for encouragement. Okay, now from now on, let me talk about mobilities, it's a main topic. So far, I introduce about more, you know, global viewpoint about connectivity. We are mostly people who are working in academia. Maybe some audience, maybe from research institution or private sector. But mobility, especially we are somehow in that mobility reason for before crossing or re-entering or whatever, we are physically interconnected sometime, cyber interconnected. Physically interconnected means we shake the hand, hugging, that means we can feel really very well. But sometimes, photo-mobility, like this webinar, but by looking you, by looking me, you may be connected on cyber space. Let's think about something further. Okay, you came to Korea because of, you know, some other, you know, situation or momentum for coming to Korea, or coming to Singapore, or after then going back to your country, many cases. There are two great examples in academic mobility. One is Erasmus program for European community. These are Erasmus program since 201987, European Committee Action Scheme for the Mobility of University Students. And then Lazzan in Swiss, APFL, they, this is the, you know, one of the highest populated area for foreign researcher, I went to there once. Now, because we are in Asian countries, what about Campus Asia programs? So Campus Asia program is comparing to Erasmus program. Now, Erasmus program changed from a few years ago, becoming Erasmus Plus after Erasmus programs. So combining many other, not only science exchange, like when training youth and sports. They all mixed up for European community. Campus Asia case, as I said, is a collective action for mobility program of university student in Asia. This one, this one objective is to establish higher education network among university in Japan, China, and Korea, to improve the competitiveness in international academic market and to nurturally develop to future leaders like you, the leaders, global leader, who can succeed in the global community. This is one example of Campus Asia programs by joining from Tsinghua and Kai'Shikya and Tokyo Tech. Yes, in the phase two, second phase, they are expanding. Now, they have, I think, more than 24, 25 individuals in 2017, more than 24, 25. And many other, you know, Asian country is not only three countries, but Asian country also becoming like observable or, you know, joining as part of certain countries, yes. So just to summarize so far, what I told you, what I showed you. This is one example as a scientist, as a researcher, who has global view. This is maybe science diplomacy, yes. So this is based on science and technology for globalization. How we can effectively, you know, connect it and influencing good thing or assisting other nations for creating certain real bridges between two countries among many countries. Okay, now change the gear, the main topic of Asian Research Network. I'm very happy to talk about or introduce Asian Research Network. As Professor Nam Jin Cho already mentioned, officially 2007, 2007, but initiated by myself, representing Korea, and Professor Masai Kauri, representing Riken in Japan, 2003. But it means already 13 years history we do have. So ARN, so Asia Research Network worked and initiated by Japanese premier institution, Riken, and Hanyang University, together with other five institutions. We built up the network platform in the beginning, because Because the Japanese institution, Riken, as I said, previous institution. And then we agreed the MOU on Asia Research Network between Riken Institution and Hanjang. Once again, this is my name, Heon Lee, at the time, 2008. The main platform is Asia Research Network. To initiate, to make platform of Asian Research Network from Japan side, the Riken, from Korean side, Hanjang University, and Poste, South Nation University, any others together. So we signed this MOU. Now let's look more, you know, clearly. Now, the Riken here, according to this MOU, Asia Research Network, ARN aims at establishment of a network which we invigorated research and education collaboration. This is what you did it in Korea and other countries, including Singapore, to solve the problems come on to Asian country, including Korea and Japan, such as the decrease in the number of researcher due to the failing birth rate, already Korea birth rate below 1.0. Extremely critical situation. And the overflow of excellent researcher to Europe and America. You came to Korea, thanks. When I went to US, yes, it's one examples. And I came back. So the first stage of ARN was launched with the participation of Riken, Hanjang University, SMU, Pohang University Science and Tech, ETRI, Electronic Telecommunications Research Institute, CRICT, Korea Research Institute Chemical Technology, lastly IPK Institute Hospital of Korea. The second phase is its expansion. Now, in the first phase of ARN, the parties have now agreed to open a level three collaboration, collaborative level three of Riken at Fusion Tech Center at Hanjang University. This is very important, the content of the MOU between Riken and Hanjang, representing Korean side for ARN establishment. The Riken is Japan's largest comprehensive research institution, renowned of high-quality research in a diverse range of scientific disciplines. And Riken was founded in 1917, already hundred-three years ago. So idea came 2003 and for many years, back and forth, back and forth, you know, kind of implementation. So 2008, July 1st, finally, Riken established. Riken-Hanjang Collaborative Research Center at this new building in Hanjang. Yes, but there are many meeting before this is opening ceremony and for many, including participant institution, but also from India. Riken later on also, India, Korea, I'm sorry. Japan Prime Minister also came, 2009 January, he also visited the Riken at Hanjang University. So the concept was following, as even I already mentioned, the contents of the MOU. Excellent research from not only from Japan, Korea, from Asia, also US, Europe country, European country, and also providing, you know, scholarship funding in that platform for, you know, research and also new culture for R and D in Asia. What you can expect? Yes, the strategic, strategy now, a strategy Asian R and D network. And also like you, what you experienced in Korea, many other countries, including me in the US, like securing, securing talented researcher or research development, sometimes translation together in science and emerging ex-technology convergence areas. Which means we are creating borderless, you know, framework and management. So we were expecting already connected society. Why? Because we were educated globally. We learned from advanced country. Then after then combining emerging with our own idea, own instinct, own, you know, knowledge, and also passion, many other things. So hopefully, people from different world, especially in Asia, coming and joining. I can, even I initiate, I cannot do all things. We need people together to make a new framework in Asia. Yes, for many years, Professor Namjoon Zhou is one key partner for ARN. He brought delegate from Singapore, specifically NTU, the president and the executive vice president, many members to Korea. And also from Japan, from other country, we organized summer camp. So Professor Namjoon Zhou first organized ARN Summer Camp in Singapore, NTU. Following that, we are also having and holding this kind of summer camp. This is one, one, the photo, what this one are listening and what they are thinking about when speaker talk about it. This is kind of academia's activities. But also ARN organizing Science and Technology Innovation Forum, 2014, first time when Korean president host ASEAN Summit in Korea. So I was called by the Ministry of Science and Tech to organize this Korea-ASEAN Science Forum. So I said STI Forum. So it is the beginning of idea with ASEAN country in 2014. So delegate from, you know, ten country and also another ASEAN country, including Saudi Arabia, sixteen country came. Yes, one, two, three, four, five, oh, sorry, fifteen countries, yes. So not only forum, but also in the second day, we have round table meeting to discuss what we can do for each country on behalf of ASEAN communities. Professor Masai Kauri, he is a founder of ARN, together with me, representing Riken. He is, he is now professor at Tokyo Tech in Tokyo, School of Materials and Chemical Technology. It's me, 2014, six years ago. So in that STI Forum, we prepared, our all member together with, we prepare recommendation. So here, let me just read, STI Development Capacity Building. So we will talk about this days, capacity building. No, maybe when I, not maybe, when I was born, I was very small, I, and I was nice. Also, let us not pick open mind guy, but later on, later on, our boundary is expanding and then our capacity is, you know, being built in. So capacity building, yes. Second, we need some scholarship through for what? Mobilities, funding sources, platform. So precious scholarship can be incentivized for young ASEAN talented people to come or took across air border as an Asian partner country, you know, delegate. So from my thirty years experience, just presenting network influential or science paper, just not influence. Of course, that is base, but human networking, real sometime. I'm sorry to show drinking photo, or especially some of them are drinking. Or I'm saying kind of human contact. Without human contact, it's not easy to make good friends. So maybe human contact, you know, through the meetings or through personal or group meeting, networking meeting, quite also sometime helpful for knowing each other. In 2014, also we organized STI Forum. And he is, he was prime, he was Minister of Science and Technology in Thailand, he kindly came and attended. 2016 Beijing, together with Chinese academic sciences, here as a research network logo, ARN co-host. This STI Forum, 2016 Beijing. So we are working closely with many different country. 2017, this is advisor committee member, Professor Lam, representing NTU, Chief of STI and Vice President. So he came to Korea many times, yes. And at the time, we also talk about talent mobility, smart factory, hyperconnected society. Hyperconnected society, I already showed you in the first part of my slide. So after, you know, panel session, we also have round table meeting. How we can discuss about innovation platform and leadership for innovation? And for further infrastructure network and development. All, Asian Research Network not only organizing STI Forum for policymaking and leading. Although I'm representing NERTE, ARN members are mostly, not mostly, a lot of, they are working in neuroscience and convergence science, including the bio and IT. So we, ARN and myself, representing Korean society together, we try to, you know, making network, making good platform for trilateral joint cooperation platform. Trilateral means China, Korea, Japan, Japan, China, Korea, Korea, Japan, China. So the purpose is to set the framework for establishing close corporate ties in a view to furthering each organization's development and to strengthening the close relationship. And advancement of neuroscience and technology globally, benefiting Asian society at large. For that, not only in nanofabrication, facility integration, but also promoting R and D program and there's a working group again here. Collaborative work for collaborative R and D program to be well done, to be launched on. Yes, human network, institutional network also quite important for that. I organize all this starting from 2014 with an initial idea. 2015, firstly, we signed up the MOU among three country. For that, after that also, we visit, he is representing neuroscience society in Japan. I am representing neuroscience society in Korea. He, the president of Chinese academic sciences, Professor Bai, Chui Bai, representing not only neuroscience globally for Chinese academic sciences. We've been working together. So why I'm showing this? Yes, as I showed you one slide about brothers, you know. My brothers, when they fought something for imagination about flying things, same story. Networking not only by someone else sometime, think continuously, continuous innovation for thinking could be more, you know, globalized, more different. So neuroscience also saying, so if we did that, three country, why not three country? Can work, even though we have some political conflict. But we are the scientists, we are normal people, no conflict. So why not cross border? European country, EU community, participate in peoples exchange, crossing border. European country, there was the reason how it could be one unit. So now, why not three country? Yes, so this one, just 2019, he is the president of Chinese academic sciences. He is representing China as a nanosenter. He is representing Chinese academic sciences global headquarter, Musa Tao, yes. And she's representing TCS, Trilateral Corporate, Corporate, Cooperation Secretary, on the three countries Minister of Foreign Affairs. And many people were talking, and we talking with a smiling face. So I just said, we are not talking about politics. We are talking about networking and how we can cooperate together. Yes, this is one examples. You can do it because I did it. Yes, young people can learn. So our mission is to, you know, transfer our experience and force the young people and give certain more global view and act globally, think globally. Of course, locally is also quite important, yes. So we did that, trilateral, GJK, China, Japan, Korea, trilateral cooperation on NERTE, yes. You can do many things, not only funding, also collaboration with partnership and many things. Yes. So for China and Japan and Korea, again, I emphasize talent mobility in Asia. Why not Japan, China, Korea, we work together with Asian country? Because somehow five is the three country. Not only population in science and tech and economic wise, somehow we are leading. So why not we work together as partners and show something good for Asian country? So human connectivity and also hopefully the R and D output may be translated as a, you know, commercial product. So business model also might be, we can go forward. Now from now on, I want to show something else. After staying eight years in America, of course, I visit again. So total nine years stay in America, US. And I, I came to my Korea eighty-eight, so thirty years so far. Japan, China, many other country I've been visiting, yes. What about India? India is a big kind of almost continent, yes, India. Very big, about one point three billions. Yes. So we also organized seven times India, Korea going to workshops. Initiated by two government, I was a chair first from the second to the seventh consecutively. If we are trying to work, this is one example. So I went to India, yes, yes. Not only as a scientist, but also sometimes as a part of the member for policymakers. I've been to, I also enjoy, you know, taking photo with beautiful Indian girls. In Saudi Arabia too, yes, as I said, the connectivity. Also friendship. So they are all happy together with me. So he is, he was Director General of Minister of Education in Saudi Arabia. We visited many institution, five days together with many Saudi Arabian delegate and some Korean delegate. What about China, yes, Nana Tech Director's Forum, yes, I am here. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, uh nineteen, every two years I've been to. So two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen, yes, again. So look, from here coming down, I don't know why, but that means we are becoming more close and important. To guide the Nana Tech globally, how with other countries. So at the time, yes, just two thousand nineteen, yes. I was talking about, this is what you saw this slide, it's me. About trilateral joint cooperation, why is so important? Yes, I showed this slide and then I took photo, then I'm showing you again. So what I said to them, because we are three country. Not only in Asia, but also somehow influencing globally. Take the spirit of China, Japan, Korea, trilateral cooperation. Remember this idea from myself, yes. So I spent a lot of time for persuading and then joining and then sharing. And then working together, finally going together for the future. This is kind of a spirit. These things also can be spread out to whole ASEAN community through again to India, to Israel, to Europe. So coming back to issue, talent mobility. So if you think that Nana Science Technology, if you think here. Science and Technology or Capacity Building instead of Nana Science and Technology. Same concept, same wording, yes, and also young talent, yes. I am not young, maybe speaker audience are young people, yes. Not only acquiring knowledge, but sharing our knowledge. So I hope this global network platform initiation, who should take the leadership? If one is not enough, many, many. But also not only one, maybe several pillars, not only one level, many levels, levels. So governing or all to govern. This is the photo two thousand nineteen. Photo two thousand seventeen. And joined Hanyang University when I was young. Nineteen nineteen, seven or eight. Already I got little gray hairs. And then two thousand five, when I was Dean of University Research, like a vice president, yes. At the time I was young, but after spend a lot of time thinking global, I'm becoming like this. And this is a trend, how we are aging. So we are also having kind of network with any academic sciences. And so we call Alliance of International Scientific Organization. But I also talk to them, talking, interacting, we are scientist. I'm not talking on the politics, scientist. How we can go together with many organizations from Singapore or from Korean community. ASEAN community, Vietnamese community, American community, North America. Brazil or Australia, yes. It's not the politics, it's a scientific debate. Goodwill for good networking, for sharing something for the future. Yes, this is what I got from Professor Nam Jin Zhou. Yes, I was talking about innovation in the people, yeah, you are researching. I hope innovations should be combined and they go on to the next phase. Yes, again, I like also this one, yes. How NTU and Singapore, including and the NUS, they are doing very good. Yes, this are all my things, same another one to remember you, to remind you, yes. So I almost finished. Yes, so two more slides. Look, ARN has many MOUs. For example, I took one from Institute of Technology in China. What about this? All with NTU, thanks Professor Nam Jin Zhou, yes, we do have MOU. Yes, but Nam Jin Zhou, he was young, two thousand fourteen now, but somehow he got little gray hairs like me. Nam Jin Zhou, look, who is this man? Yes, Nam Jin Zhou's student who came to US to become his student. So he attended many meeting Korea, when I was the president of Korean Nana Society, I was a chair. Nana College two thousand thirteen. Professor Joshua Jackman, Josh, he came, he made a great presentation. Among best, best, uh, post award, he got Grammy. So today, this is one example, he became professor at Ungin Gun University. In the Department of Engineering. I really would like to, you know, give a quick comment on Professor Nam Jin Zhou's contribution. Good professors, good students, good networking and then good human being. Passion continuously building up your capacity, then become someone later. I hope all of you can do all things, okay? I will finish up by just showing these photos, yes. So I hope many of you, including me, we become small bridges. To be connected, to make a connection to many other, you know, friends, institution, country, whatever. Again, I really thank you very much for your great attention. I hope my message hopefully can make you a little bit more globally. If you are young enough, yes, go abroad and make global and local things convergence. Like what Professor Nam Jin Zhou always concern about. Thank you very much, very much, Professor Nam Jin Zhou and all audience, thank you.
Thank you very much for the great talk and then, uh, you know, I have a, uh, just a few comment about the this inspiration. A talk from the Professor Heaven Lee. And it's this amazing work he did it for last twenty years. The most importantly, this work has been done way before or or just those inspiration is a very, very greatly. Covered by and now is the time to the supporting the Asian Research Network. That's why the our effort in, in, in today conference, which is very much aligned. Then we have a next talk gonna be the, uh. Ten plus people's talk about East Asia, uh, East Asia, East, South East Asia and as well as the India talk. And the leading by the, uh, guidance of, uh, Chair Professor Heaven Lee. Thank you very much and then I hope you can enjoy the most of the lecture game, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Heaven Lee.